Matt, can you make sure we have sound?
Of course.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
This meeting is being held in conformance with the Sunshine Law. Notice of date, time, and place has been furnished to the Bergen Record and the Ridgewood News. Notice has also been furnished and put on the bulletin board of the administration building. The clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Giordano.
Here.
Ms. Saracola.
Here.
Mr. Ritchie.
Here.
Mr. Schatz.
Here.
Mr. Schillerow.
Here.
Mrs. Sherman.
Here.
Everyone kindly rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a moment of silence for all our Waltwick veterans and all veterans across our country who have given the ultimate sacrifice to keep us free so we can assemble the way we are tonight. Clerk, I want to do the prayer.
Dear Lord, grant us your guidance and wisdom. Let this meeting be conducive to unity and fairness. May our actions reflect our agenda to assist our borough's needs, not our personal goals and needs, in his name, amen.
Amen.
Good evening, everyone, and we will start our meeting by myself having my report being done. First of all, we are doing some recognitions tonight. One of them is recognizing members of the Waldwick Police Department. Unfortunately, the chief told us that the officers cannot be here tonight, but I still want to recognize them and talk about why we are honoring them tonight. First of all, on November 30th, 2022, the Waldwick Police Department arrested a 40-year-old Mawa person for shooting incident that occurred on the morning of November 30th in the borough of Waldwick. The person was developed as a suspect by Detective Dave Passeretti and Detective T.J. Palaya after an investigation of shooting incident on Grove Street. This person was taken into custody by the Waldwick Police Department and with the assistance of the Mawa Police Department and the Bergen County Regional SWAT Team. A motive for the shooting is still under investigation. This person was charged with firearm offense and was transported to the Bergen County Jail. The officers that were involved in this helping of our community was Lieutenant Seaford, Detective Sergeant Passeretti, Detective Palaya, Sergeant Sinclair, Police Officer Sherman, Police Officer Van Dyke. Also, on January 3rd of this year, at 7:30 a.m. in the morning, Waldick Police responded to a report of a male party peering into a home on Wanamaker Avenue. Officers responded and set up a perimeter. A police canine was requested and local schools were requested to shelter in place. The male party was located and apprehended a short time later after a brief foot pursuit by the officers from Waldwick, Saddle River, Midland Park, and Wykoff. The male party was identified as a 26-year-old person whose known address was in Allendale. This person was wanted by New Jersey State Patrol after scounding from a facility on December 29th. He is also a suspect in several area burglaries over the last several days and has been incarcerated for burglary in the past. This person was transferred into custody by the New York State Parole, New Jersey State Parole, and remained and was given over to the Bergen County Jail. He is facing charges out of Waldick for CDS, resisting arrest, criminal trespassing, and receiving stolen property, and has pending charges in Allendale and Ho-Ho-Kus as well as Saddle River for burglary. Responding officers from this shooting were Detective Dave Passeretti, Detective T.J. Palaya, Police Officer Chris Crone, Police Officer Tom Zackman, and Police Officer O'Connell Walsh. We would also like to thank the areas of towns who also helped out on this. Here in Waldwick, we are very thankful for all that our police officers do. There's officers tonight that are being honored as well as all the entire police force who every day leave their homes to protect all of us. President Obama once said, "Police officers put their lives on the line for us every single day." They got a tough job to do to maintain public safety and hold accountability to those who break the law. And here in Waldwick, we are very blessed to have a great police department who watches out for all of us every day. These certificates of recognition, I will turn over to our police chief, and he in return will hand them over to our police officers who are the ones that we are honoring tonight. It's always nice to honor those who come forward to help one another. And as I said before, not only do we have a great police department, but we have a great fire department and also an ambulance corps who do not worry about themselves and always come out every day to help others. So tonight, we thank our police department, and we look forward to always having a police department that takes care of all of us. If you could give this to us, please. At this time, we have Liam Vin Olive here, who is an Eagle Scout who is doing an Eagle Scout project. I'd like him to come up and explain to us what he would like to do.
Hello, council. My name is Liam Vin Olive, and I'm a Boy Scout from Troop 88 of Waldick, New Jersey. I'm a Life Scout. I'm going on Eagle, and I'm here to talk about my Eagle Scout project. This is a project that will be building a trail from Malcolm Tree to the Saddle River UNT. After clearing a path for this trail, we will have an added layer of mulch put on top of it to level it out. This trail will be marked with logs along the side of it that I will be getting from the woods. At the Saddle River UNT, the town will be building a bridge in the future to connect the two sides of the trails together. Once you get across a river, I'll be clearing another path leading to an already existing trail in Borough Park. The pre-existing trail is undamaged except for a part at the end where it has a little rain damage and flood damage from being so close to the river. I will be repairing these and placing logs on them, on the sides to mark it. I will also be placing stakes so this does not happen, stakes into the logs so that this doesn't happen in the future and they stay down. So this will make two trails in Borough Park, making the park more accessible and expanding the activities that the park has. I'll be using volunteers from Troop 88 to finish a trail, and the needed materials that can be found, like logs to mark the side of the trail, will be in the woods. To start off the project, I will be requesting 20 yards of mulch, some wheelbarrows, rakes, and shovels from the DPW. Approving this project for the town will be beneficial because it will be introducing two new trails to the town's repertoire. That's it for my presentation, but if you have any questions about it, I'll be glad to answer them.
I met Liam a couple of times in my office to talk about this project and another project he was doing. Now Liam's sister was the Eagle Scout that did the first path, and now he's going to continue the path that his sister has and add another path to it.
Yeah, the green one is the path that my sister made, and I will be getting to the end of that and connecting it to Malcolm Tree.
And I think, I really think that this path is going to be really great because knowing Liam, he's going to probably want to do it much better than his sister did.
Of course.
And it's very nice that you want to do this for our borough. I mean, we had a meeting before this one about park space, and we have a very limited amount of park space in the borough, and a young person like you who wants to do something to make more space for the community, I commend you, and I think it's a good project to have him move forward on. Is everybody in agreement with this?
Yes.
Well, you have, I'll go.
Thank you.
If you need me to sign anything, just you know where I am, and good luck with everything.
Thank you, council.
Congratulations.
Also, under my report, a gentleman by the name of Dan Wagners resigned from the planning board effective March 1st. Stan Kowalski will be put up as Class 5 member of the planning board to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Wagners. John Vavalk will move up to Alternate 1, and he will continue the unexpired space that Stan Kowalski has given up. And the new person on the board, who will be Alternate 2, will be John Kabibo. He'll be a member of the alternate board. This will be going to effect soon as tonight's meeting. We will send this over to the planning board, and they will all be told where their positions are now on the planning board. Also, there's a proclamation tonight, Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, whereas the people with developmental disabilities are of all racial, ethnic, educational, social, and economic backgrounds and are all valued and contributing members of society, and whereas within the state of New Jersey, nearly one in four adults have some type of developmental disability. And whereas the borough of Waldick fully supports the transgressioning of individuals with developmental disabilities to promote inclusive and community integrations, and whereas Developmental Disability Awareness Month is a time to recognize a culture of meaningful and full inclusion of individuals with developmental disabilities in all facets of community life and to set forth its commitment to identify and remove barriers to inclusive for all Waldick residents. And whereas early intervention, education, employment, and community-based services continue to be vital in enabling all citizens with a developmental disability to enjoy the rights of citizenship. And whereas recognizing and celebrating the abilities and contributions of people with developmental disabilities enriches everyone's life and signifies Waldick's commitment to equal opportunity, access, and rights for individuals and disabilities. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Thomas Giordano, Mayor of the borough of Waldick and Bergen County, New Jersey, do hereby recognize March 2023 as the Developmental Disability Awareness Month in the borough of Waldick and call upon everyone in attendance here to be witness to everything that we have done today. And by doing this that we are doing tonight, we will make the world a little bit better. Dated March 14, 2023. This proclamation will be put in the lobby of our building for the whole month of March, so everyone, if they want to come and see it, it'll be posted up there. Financial and Administrative Committee, Mr. Schillerow.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be giving a more detailed report later on in the agenda when we introduce the 2023 budget, so that will serve as my report for this evening.
Thank you. Fire and Police Protection Committee, Councilman Saracola.
Thank you, Mayor. Starting with the police department, we don't have a report. I spoke with the chief this morning. Moving on to the fire department, so far this month, they had 18 total emergency calls with five mutual aid runs. The assistant chief also let me know on Saturday night that they were responding to a basement fire and no one was injured. The members are still heavily involved in the schooling that I mentioned last month as well. They also have a member in State Fire 1 class. To become a senior member and interior qualified, you need this class that runs for almost a year twice a week. Other than that, maintenance has been happening every week, as well as interior drills and refreshers. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Sherman.
Thank you. I was given a report from the Waldwick Volunteer Ambulance Corps for the month of February. They had 25 calls, which were answered by 16 members of the corps. They responded to one mutual aid call. 23 of their calls were answered in less than five minutes. They had three calls to the Bristol, so in two months, they have been there 10 times. Let's see, they went to, I mentioned they had a mutual aid call in Midland Park. They went to Hackensack University Medical Center once, New Bridge three times, and Valley Hospital 16. Three people decided they didn't want to go to the hospital. And I have a meeting with them next Monday night, their general meeting, which I will be attending at the, on the second floor of their building. And I also attended the Board of Education meeting last night. And do you mind if I say?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to mention the DECA team for the Waldick High School, won in Atlantic City, first place, and they now qualify to participate in the International Career and Development Conference in Orlando, Florida in April. I believe this is the first time this has ever happened in Waldick's history. And congratulations to Penelope Hom, Caitlin Hugh, Millenia Jaghatspanyan, and Tyler Burns, who represented Waldick High School 2023, and they now qualify for Orlando, Florida. So congratulations to those students on a job well done. The Board of Education discussed their, the progress on the referendum. They have some of the science labs now open, and they're very happy with the progress that's being taken place. They also had a big turnout from the Waldick Lions Club regarding their carnival that's in limbo right now, waiting on approvals from the Board of Education. So it was a good meeting. It was short and sweet, and I just really wanted to congratulate these DECA students because they're really impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Weber's not here tonight, so we'll move on to Public Works Committee. Councilman Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. So in the last two weeks since we last been here, there's not a whole lot to report on on Public Works. We almost got slammed with a storm, but we were fortunate. I did, since our last meeting, have a chance to attend a meeting with the fire department. My colleague, Councilwoman Saracola, was out of town, so we met with the fire department to discuss the potential new fire truck and made a presentation on different bids that they've been getting, and we asked for some additional information. But all in all, I think it was a good meeting, and I think we accomplished a lot. Also met with the mayor, Councilwoman Saracola, and our borough administrator, Mr. Weary, with the group that's doing the traffic study and have a little bit of insight into kind of some of those reports, but I think a more detailed report's coming further, and it sounds like a lot, you know, they'll make some recommendations, and then the council will have a chance to review and we'll be going from there. So that's my report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Buildings and Grounds Committee, Councilman Schatz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Buildings and Grounds, just a little bit update, couple of updates. We're starting to tile in Borough Hall. They fixed the handicap door in Borough Hall as well. They're also now interviewing for new custodians. Hopefully, that'll go very quickly because I think it can really help out the town and the borough. And then my report will get more detailed, I'm sure, as soon as our budget and our capital budget are approved, which I think is tonight, right? Introduced tonight, so correct. That's the Buildings and Grounds. Environmental Meeting, I just wanted to point out that's this week. I do want to point out that the Styrofoam Collection, which is working out very, very well, is April 15th is the next one, Saturday, I think, from 9 to 1, down at the Borough Hall, Borough DPW. Excuse me. Also wanted to point out that there's also hazardous waste collection. BCUA is starting up again for its springtime. March 11th at Munaki, May 13th is at Mawa, and April 16th is Paramus. You can go onto the websites to find information about that if you wanted to get rid of some waste, spring cleaning type things. And then also, I met March 1st with the planning board, and we had two resolutions that were approved, a personal training tenant and a hair salon tenant, and then we had two applications, one for subdivision and one for psychotherapy counseling. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Administrator, Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor. First, an update on the water treatment for PFAS. We have been having monthly meetings with the DEP and the I-Bank to discuss our permitting approval. Those have been ongoing since 2021. We had one earlier this month, and as we get closer to getting our final approval from the DEP, laid out a little bit of a tighter timeline. We expect to receive approval for financing, which will enable us to advertise by the end of this month. As long as we get that approval for financing, we expect then to award a contract on May 23rd at that meeting and then complete the project early next year. Right now, the biggest effect on the timeline for the project is the availability of the actual treatment vessels. So we have one installed at Veterans Park. We need two at each of the five locations that we will be installing treatment on, and so right now, the lead time for those items is 40 weeks. So that, you know, that's going to, the biggest driver of the length of the project once we award a contract. It was discussed about our traffic study. That is a study north of Prospect Street and inbounded by Route 17, Franklin Turnpike and the Allendale border. We have engaged with Michael Baker to do that study. They've done our traffic counts and speed study, presented some early findings to the mayor and council. They will prepare a preliminary report for review by the full council, and then they will come and meet with the full mayor and council as well as the public to get input on their study findings and recommendations. And so we want to make sure that the public is involved in that conversation, especially the public that lives in or is affected by those areas in the traffic study, and so we will be advertising those to the public via our community news and some Facebook posts and things as we get closer. Something to look forward to. And lastly, tonight, there is a resolution approving the Borough of Waldick's Home Improvement Program Policy and Procedures Manual. This program is required by our rehabilitation obligation and our fair share housing element plan, and the purpose of this project is to take either owner-occupied or rented properties in the borough of Waldick and give them loans to do home improvement programs, to take substandard living conditions and bring them up to accepted standards. So those would be for major housing infrastructure like roofs, electric, plumbing, load-bearing structures. And the loans can be anywhere up to $23,000 for owners and $17,000 for renters. There is an obligation to live in the property for 10 years, and then you can get the entire loan balance forgiven. If you leave earlier than 10 years, you'd be responsible to pay back that loan. But it is a great opportunity for people who are very low, low, and moderate income to get these loans, which can ultimately be forgiven, to make substantial upgrades on their homes. And so we have, we have a good pot of money in our Affordable Housing Trust that is generated from development fees for when people in town develop their properties, and that is what will fund this program. So this doesn't come out of taxes, this will come out of our Affordable Housing Trust. We hope that the average project is about $10,000, but like I said, they could be up to $23,000 for homeowners. And so this is a great program and a great opportunity for residents. We will begin marketing this program this week, so we'll start to put out emails with information on the program and how you can apply. The applications and all the program administration is done through the borough's vendor, Community Grants, Planning, and Housing, which are professionals. They do this type of program all throughout the state. So it's something that we've been working on for a little while now, and we're really excited to get off the ground. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Clerk, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to mention that nominating petitions are due by March 27th, 4 p.m. in my office. April 12th is the deadline to change your political party affiliation. I might as well go to May. May 16th, voter registration, the last day. May 16th is the last day to register to vote in the primary election, and my office will be open until 8 o'clock. Switching gears, our dog license late notices have just gone out, so those people who have not paid their dog license now have a $10 per dog late fee on top of the registration fee. Our tenant registrations are also out, and they are due back by April the 7th. We're already getting calls, so it's on the website, but, and in the Friday email blast, yard waste starts April the 11th. That's the weekly yard waste. Additionally, just want to mention that our Waldick Waste Disposal Day, which includes wood waste, and our shred day for, our free shred day for BCUA is May the 6th. Shredding is from 9 until 1. The wood, I'm sorry, the waste disposal day is from 9 until 3, and that's all at the recycling center. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant Administrator, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. One grant that I would like to alert the council and the public on that we've recently applied for is the AARP Community Challenge Grant. This grant is provided by the AARP to focus on projects that benefit entire communities with an emphasis on seniors. The mayor and council have discussed funding lighting for Borough Park, and after speaking with Pat and the mayor, we felt that that was a good project to apply for funding for. So that closes tomorrow. The application is done and it's been submitted. If approved in May, the project would have to be completed by November. In addition to the borough's application, because we're only allowed to do one, the VFW was looking to put a handicap accessible ramp on their facility. I do believe they are applying as well, so I do wish them the best of luck in this grant opportunity as well. I hope that both get approved because both seem like very good projects that will benefit not just seniors but anyone who uses both the VFW facility and Borough Park. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. No report this evening. There will be one item for a closed session.
Okay, thank you. Consent Resolutions and Resolutions of the Governing Body.
Thank you, Mayor. Be it resolved that the following resolutions herewith listed by consent, having been considered by the governing body of the borough of Waldick, are hereby passed and approved. 2013, 113, approval of consent. 2013, I'm sorry, policy vote A. Nicole Ray's requests use Pavilion A on April 20th from 6 p.m. to dusk for a wedding ceremony with alcoholic beverages being served. B. Michelle Cullessa requests to use Pavilion B on June 4th from 1 p.m. to dusk for a graduation party with alcoholic beverages being served. C. Waldick Chamber of Commerce Run Committee requests to display a 3-foot-by-5-foot American flag fastened to the north side fence on Hopper Avenue Bridge during the Waldick 5K run on May 7th with removal no later than May 8th. Policy vote D is going to be moved to later on into the meeting after the ordinance, the public hearing on one of the ordinances. 2023, 114, awarded non-fair and open contract to Seal Master Municipal for a tar pot sealing unit in the amount of $21,958. 2023, 115, awarded non-fair and open contract to La Forza Construction LLC for bollard replacement at the Route 17 South bus stop in the amount of $5,600. 2023, 116, awarded non-fair and open contract to Coaster Associates for upgrades to the Wykoff Avenue booster station in the amount of $1,975. 2023, 117, awarded non-fair and open professional service contract to Boswell Engineering for engineering services for ADA curb ramp upgrades in the amount of $9,800. 2023, 118, authorize the BCUA Solid Waste Cooperative Marketing Program Agreement for Solid Waste Disposal. 2023, 119, approval of the Home Improvement Program Policies and Procedures Manual created by Community Grants, Planning, and Housing dated February 2nd, 2023. 2023, 120, authorize lease extension for Monopole Tower lease at Block 110, Lot 4 with AT&amp;T. 2023, 121, authorize a borough auction. 2023, 122, authorize advertisement and receipt of bids for concessions at the Waldick Municipal Pool. 2023, 123, authorize advertisement and receipt of bids to lease and operate vegetative waste transfer station. 2023, 124, approval of social affair permit for the Waldick Community Alliance Annual Car Show. 2023, 125, accept donation of trees and labor for Borough Park. 2023, 126, payment of vouchers. And 2023, 129, authorization to refund and cancel taxes for 100% veteran exemption.
We have a motion, a second to accept. Motion by Mr. Schatz, second by Mr. Schillerow on the question. Yes. Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the things I want to mention on here that, you know, we don't see on every agenda is one-twenty, authorize lease extension for Monopole. I mean, people may not be aware that the Borough does own some cellphone towers, and we lease space to the major carriers, so it is a source of revenue for the Borough. Pleased to see that A T. and T. will be extending its lease, and happy to see that revenue to continue for us.
Anyone else? Yes.
Yes, I'd like to speak on two thousand twenty-three dash one twenty-five and point out that these trees are donated by the Waldwick Lions Club, fourteen trees to the Borough of Waldwick on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. When you spoke to the Lions Club, did they say, do they want to help plant the trees?
They do. They're interested in purchasing the trees, but also being involved in their planting. They were looking to create somewhat of a, an event around it for both the Lions Club and the community. They have an interest in, you know, that sense of community and that sense of giving back, and, you know, they want to do this not just for the club, for the Borough, but kind of with us as well. So we're excited about that opportunity. We will be dedicating a bit of D P W resources to this as well, especially pulling out the old trees and creating the pit for the new trees.
You know what? Why don't we reach out to the Lions Club and see if they would want to get involved? Because, when is it? In April, it's, April is Earth Day, and usually we have the Beautification Committee, Environmental Committee, and also the Green Team get together. Last year, we did cleanups and everything. So why don't we ask them if they would like to be involved? We could have one big ceremony, which we could do cleanup, we could do planting, and we could do learning education stuff for everybody. Because we did that last year, but we didn't have plant. And if they don't want, you know, if they don't mind helping us, and we'll help them plant. You know, they are community involved, and we should help them.
Sure.
Everybody all right with that? Yes.
Thank you. The Lions Club reached out to me as the director of the Beautification Committee, and they asked me to rally my committee to help with the planting.
Right. What we'll do is, we'll set up a, we'll set up a meeting between the Environmental, Green Team, and Beautification and them, and we'll just sit down, because Kelly's usually in charge of it anyway, and we will have, we will have like the program set up and what we could do.
Wonderful.
Good.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
This is for trees in the Borough Park?
That's right, yeah. Right when you come into Borough Park, and it splits between the parking lot straight ahead of you and Pine Street to the right, there's that L shape of trees there. Those are old pear trees. They're probably installed about twelve years ago. They never really took, by reports of our D P W superintendent. We've had to remove a few over the past few years. We've got a couple that are leaners, and we're trying to ratchet strap back straight, but those trees aren't long for this world. So we had an opportunity with the generosity of the Lions Club to replace them.
Have we asked anybody to donate, have we asked anything to donate anything towards the garden out here that we're going to be doing around the parking lot at all, or no?
No, but if you know anybody, send them my way. We're happy to take any donation, yeah. And these trees are native to this area, which is a, you know, something where, as the Borough plants trees, we're looking to make sure we incorporate native trees.
Anyone else?
Well, just one, policy A. Did you explain to this woman about what policy is about wedding ceremonies in Borough Park? Because we had an issue once before with a wedding, that they were going to bring tables, chairs, and tents in and put it on the grass, and they thought they could do it, and then we had to say no to them. She's aware of that. Because I don't want, you know, I don't want to get a bride nervous during their wedding. Good. Anyone else? Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Saracola?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing with the Clerk Conley Reed, ordinance number two oh, two-three dash five.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-five, an ordinance amending Chapter forty-eight fees, section sixty-four dash four-point-one parks, tennis tags and fees, adding section sixty-four dash four-point-three parks, veterans' field, amending section ten-point-four fee schedules for use of the second floor of the Ambulance Corps Building, amending chapter sixty-four parks, section four permits for special events, and adding section sixty-four-point-four parks, special events.
Anyone from the council would like to comment on this ordinance that was just read? Yes.
Thank you. I'm still sticking with my original problem with this of not charging fees to use a pavilion, and to, I have a problem renting out the tennis courts when we only have four of them, because our residents then are unable to use the facilities. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, we talked about this before, you know, we got to the introduction, and then the public advertising. Now, here we are to review it one final time. And essentially, for those that weren't here, for those discussions, our administrator and staff took a look at some of the facilities and resources in the Borough. We charged fees for some, not for others. Over the years, we get requests from different organizations and companies to use our facilities. So I think we just kind of felt like we needed to visit that policy and take a look at what we want to do with our resources in terms of making them available, and perhaps charge a fee for some. Essentially, I think the position we took was there are some resources we want residents to have free of charge to be able to use them, and yet make them available to others for a fee, non-residents, private for-profit corporations, things like that, for a fee. We did talk about tennis courts quite a bit. We do only have the four courts, and we are putting limits on anyone who wants to use them for a fee. No one could ever use all four courts. They could use two at the max, and they wouldn't be during peak times, I think, when they would be in demand. But I do believe this first year, this will be in effect, that we will monitor that, and if we feel like it's, you know, taking away from residents using it, that we'll have to revisit that. So I think this is a, is a good improvement, given our experience the past couple of years, and ready to take it to the next step.
Anyone else? I close the council's comments and open up to the public. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance that was just read?
Jeff Rogat, sixty-three East Prospect Street. More of a question and a comment. I can make a comment, but that's what's required for here. With regard to the tennis courts and the fees, I know there's a sign, I think there's a sign on the door that says, you're not supposed to be doing paid lessons on there. Is there, is the board contemplating, is there a change in that policy, or is the board concerned that if this is made available for fee, that there will be some instructors looking to take advantage of that and really provide tennis lessons in these courts in that way?
Thank you, Mayor. So, right previous to this ordinance being adopted, there is a restriction on commercial activity on the tennis courts and Borough Park as a whole, with, or Borough Parks as a whole, without approval from the mayor and council. How it will be going forward is that that commercial activity will be, could be approved by the mayor and council for a fee. So, right now, typically, we don't allow it, because without collecting a fee, there's no advantage to the Borough, especially for that. But there now will be a structure where the council can consider and potentially approve those requests for a fee. There is a limitation put on the amount of courts offered by the ordinance. So we have four tennis courts, only two can be rented out at a time. And again, that's at the discretion of the mayor and council. So I know that the request before us, they had requested all day, Monday to Friday, and it's just, that wasn't realistic, right? And so, you know, we've pared down their request to a few hours over a few days, and in a way that we think is reasonable, and will still maintain the availability of courts for residents in the Borough, to make it likely that the mayor and council would vote favorably.
Is there, is it being contemplated times when this would be permitted or not? For example, you show up Saturday morning, tennis and pickleball, which is pretty, pretty well-used there, and it's jammed with lessons for commercial activity that would make it harder to use during that period.
Yeah, similar. It's available on the weekends, but it would be at the discretion of the mayor and council. So the mayor and council, understanding what the residents' need for court space would be, is taken into consideration when they vote on that request.
And I don't begrudge someone coming down and giving lessons. My son gets lessons, and I think that's awesome. It's just, you know, there are certain times where it's starting, like, it never used to be described, and I think in part, the pickleball line, which has been awesome. You know, there's been a lot of uptick in play with pickleball and tennis, and just, I'd ask you to consider how the courts are being used, to think about when to allow the commercial activity.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I close the public's comments and ask for a motion, a second to pass this ordinance on second reading, and that the clerk be authorized to advertise in local legal newspapers as required by law. Do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Don, second by Paul. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Saracola?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
No.
And then, Mayor, if we can just, policy vote D, is superstar tennis request to use two tennis courts June one or the conclusion of high school tennis season through August thirty-first, from three-thirty to seven on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays.
Do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Don, second by?
Question?
No. I need him.
It's really a policy vote, so.
Take a second. Anyone, anyone have a question? Yes.
What, what day is June first? Is it on the weekend?
June fourth. No, it's during the week.
They're only during the week.
During the week, Monday, Tuesday.
During the week. Yeah, so they would start then the following day. They would be there June fifth, should this be.
No.
No. Go ahead.
Anyone else? Yes.
I just want to point out that this policy vote D, they're asking for three times a week, for three months, three and a half hours each day, for eleven hours total a week, that our residents who paid for those courts are unable to use the courts. Thank you.
Anyone else?
What's the, what's the fee again? I'm just curious. I know we've talked about this, and I'm sorry, I should have written it down.
No, the fee for them will be a thousand dollars. So it's a thousand dollars per season. So should they decide then they want to extend it in the fall, it'd be another thousand dollars.
So we're charging a thousand bucks for a thousand bucks? Three and a half hours a night, three days a week? It just seems a little long. It seems a little. It seems like three and a half hours, three days a week's a little long.
Yeah.
Is this the group that came to us in the beginning?
It is, yep. And I discussed with them, you know.
I thought it was going to be two days a week.
We had, in previous discussions, had agreed to three days a week.
Are the hours flexible for them? I mean, I just, I apologize, I just didn't envision them doing three and a half hours a day for three.
I don't believe that the hours are flexible for them, and this is, they had asked for more hours and more days. So this was bringing, in my previous discussions with council, or specific council members, this was bringing it down to what I thought would be favorable to the mayor and council.
So are they giving lessons? Is that?
They are.
So they only have to pay a thousand dollars for using it for three months, for eleven hours per week, and three days a week? Thank you.
I thought this was only two days, unless I misunderstood.
I misunderstood as well.
I mean, two days is good, Monday and Tuesday, but three days?
Can we go back to them and say, two days? I mean, can we change, can we amend this and vote on it?
That I need to know right away?
You can do whatever you like. I mean, I would, I would say that if, if three days would be voted down by the mayor and council, then I'm sure the applicant would appreciate it being considered tonight for two days, but.
It's, it's just an awful lot of time that our own residents cannot use the courts. It's, it's in peak, get out of work, and look forward to going to play tennis with your family or your friend, and there's only two courts available for all of these hours all summer long? It just doesn't seem like a, something our residents would be happy about when they got to the courts looking forward to play tennis.
Anyone else?
Well, what if we were to revise it and offer them Mondays, Tuesdays? And then we approve that, and then you tell them that that's the offer?
Or, or?
Do you want to remove this from the?
Sorry?
Or, or, well.
Yeah, but the thing is, if you're going to tell them or her or whatever to, then we have to make sure, you know, not that you have to be forced to vote for yes or no, but if you tell them to, and then all of a sudden, they come back, and we're going to put this to a vote, and then you say no, it's wasting of your time, our time, their time, everybody's time.
Well, we can vote now. I'll amend the resolution to be Mondays and Tuesdays, not Thursdays. Can we do that?
Does the, do you care which two days they do? If it's not Friday, I'd say?
If it's not Friday or weekend.
If that's where you're leaning, could you say two days, Monday through Thursday? Give them some flexibility?
Okay.
If it doesn't matter to you, at least, to give them that opportunity.
I think the weekend should be left to the residents.
Yeah, no, I think.
Do we know how busy these courts really are in the summer at this time? Like, are people, like, waiting around to be on the courts on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
In the evening, I mean, three-thirty, it's hot, right, in the summer?
Yeah.
So, you know, we see the most play, I would say, early in the morning. There is an uptick in the summer after, after work, but I'd say not as much in the morning, from what I see during the week.
So then, are two courts enough for people? No. Hot. Based on what, though? Like, how do we know?
Yeah, again, that's just based on my observations. I don't know.
Well, what's the loss here for us? We're getting a thousand dollars. We're restricting it to two days.
Yeah, but I don't want to give the whole, all the courts away to one group when we have a residence that would like, I hate to see a resident waiting outside the gate.
Oh, I thought the, I thought the implication was that we should let them do more days.
Yeah, I'd like to know if they're that crowded. Like, is two enough? Can we rent these two out?
Isn't this the first season that we're having the pickleball available? Was it available last season?
Yes.
Okay, because I know pickleball's very popular with our residents, and it's just very disappointing to me to even entertain the thought of not having every single court seven days a week available to our residents. You know, I think we're very generous. We closed down the courts for the high school girls' team in the autumn and the boys' team in the spring, which is wonderful, and our residents are used to that. But to go ahead and close it down for a business, to conduct business and teach lessons on our courts that we only have four, why don't they, I'm not saying they should, but other towns and county courses have multiple, multiple courts. We only have four. It's not fair to take them away from our residents.
But are we really thinking about, what about the Waldwick kids that might want to use the courts in their town and use these people for their lessons? Like, this is still an opportunity for kids to play tennis or adults to play tennis.
Did you ask these people, how many people from Waldwick are in their program?
A minority of Waldwick people are from the program. They were hoping, I mean, what they said to me was, they were hoping to get more people by doing a program in Waldwick. This is the group that typically operates in the covered courts during the summer months. The people who take their lessons like to be outside, and so they're looking for an outdoor.
What is the pleasure of the council? Would you like to go back to them and say, listen, two days? Or just say no?
I'd be okay with it.
Two days.
Yes. None.
You got four to one. Please go back to them and let them know that two days they could have, not the weekends.
Yeah, two days, Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, not the weekend. Okay? I'm sorry?
Is there an opportunity to comment on this part of, of this?
No. But you could do it on the new business, uh, you could do it on the public comments.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to have the introduction of ordinance with the clerk, can I read ordinance number 2023-06?
Ordinance number 2023-06, Borough of Waldorf, Bergen County, State of New Jersey, calendar year 2023 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget cost of living allowance and to establish a cash bank pursuant to NJSA 40A colon four dash forty-five point fourteen.
Motion in a second is in order to move and pass this ordinance on first reading and that it be advertised in local legal newspapers as required by law, setting a hearing two weeks from tonight's meeting at 7:30 PM or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. Do I have a motion in a second? Motion by Don, second by Mike. On the question. Don.
So essentially, and we're going to be introducing the, the budget in a minute and talking about the, the increases that, that we're seeing this year. In New Jersey, there are, um, maximum amounts established by state that dictate how much you can increase appropriations and how much you can increase taxes. So there's a tax cap and appropriation cap. Those limits are determined by New Jersey at two and a half percent right now. And what we're requesting is the, um, ability to exceed that cap by an additional percent as necessary to meet our obligations. And, you know, this year we are finding it necessary to do that. So we're going to be requesting the ability to increase our appropriation cap to an additional percentage.
Anyone else? Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Saracola?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerow?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Clerk, can I read resolution number 2023-127?
Introduction to the 2023 Municipal Budget. Be resolved that the following statements of revenue and appropriations attached here too constitute the local budget of the Borough of Waldorf, Bergen County, New Jersey for the year 2023. Be it further resolved that the said budget be published in the Bergen Record in the issue of Monday, March 20th, and that a hearing on the budget will be held at the Municipal Building, 63 Franklin Turnpike, Waldorf, New Jersey on Tuesday, April the 11th at 7:30 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached.
Motion in a second is in order to move and pass this ordinance on first reading and that it be advertised in local legal newspapers as required by law, setting up a public hearing two weeks from tonight's meeting at 7:30 PM or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. Do I have a motion in a second? Motion by Don, second by Mike. Uh, before I hand it over to Don, I just want to just say that tonight we're presenting our municipal budget. And I'd like to thank everyone that was involved in putting this budget together. Our administrator, our CFO, our clerk, our assistant clerk, our grant administrator, and all the department heads. They all did a great job doing, putting this budget together. Also, I'd like to thank the council. This was a very hard budget this year. And we had to think a lot about Waldorf, had to think a lot about the residents, we had to think a lot about the future of Waldorf. And I think this budget will show that we worked together and produced a budget that we all could live with and we could all be proud of. And I know, Don, you'll, it's up to you now.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and, um, yeah, as the mayor said, this was years a little different. In prior years, um, you know, we didn't see, uh, the need to, to even look at appropriation caps and, and tax caps and things like that. But, um, what you'll see when, when the budget information is available to you, a few things to be on the lookout for. First of all, when we talk about the borough's budget, we're really talking about a number of different things. So the borough has an operating budget, sometimes we refer to as the current fund, but it's basically our operating budget. And we have a capital budget. And, uh, those things are clearly broken out in our budget. As you can imagine, our operating budget's the day-to-day operations, uh, expenses, salaries, things like that. And our capital budget is investing in our community when we do improvements to buildings or infrastructure, purchasing equipment, vehicles, supplies, things like that. And then we have a water utility that has a separate budget. So our water utility also has an operating budget and it has a capital budget as well. So our challenges in 2023, different, I'd say, than the past decade or so, when, uh, in a given budget year, you would see an item or two perhaps that you saw significant increases in the cost of those items. And it was often offset by reductions in other items. It could be offset by a, a number of things that you felt like you had some control over. What we saw this year, really for the first time in my experience in, in doing this for many years, was, um, a number of significant line items in our budget that saw double-digit percentage increases at the same time. Um, and, and, uh, what's frustrating for us was we have no control over any of those line items. It's not like they're negotiable, and I'll give you some examples in a moment. And it's not like we could decide whether we wanted to keep those things or not do those things. So, you know, kind of an interesting challenge for us when you think about, you know, typically when we're introducing the budget, we talk about, well, you know, we have contractual obligations, we have this, we have that. You know, this year, we really needed to focus on what our caps were, what these increases meant to us, and, and how we address the budget for the year. So we're talking about things like employee health benefits, went up 22% this year. To put in perspective, the last few years, the state health benefits fund went up about 2% a year. Some years it went up 1% or none at all. Most other health benefit funds that we see in, in both the private sector as well as in the public sector probably went up about 6%, 7%, 8%. Then we had, uh, the unfortunate timing that our contract for our solid waste collection expired and we needed to renew that this year. So essentially, we'll talk about that in terms of this is something you've already been experiencing because we were looking at increases in our garbage collection, garbage and recycling collection of about 60%. Some other towns that we've talked to have gone up 70, 80% in one year. To help reduce that increase, we made some changes to our collection schedule. We made changes to our collection amounts that people can put out. And we took away bulk pickup from curbside, uh, collection by the, the garbage hauler. So the net result of that was we go out to bid and, uh, and our garbage contract went up 40%. Garbage disposal, which is separate than collection, went up 11%. Our insurance for the borough for property and casualty and workers' comp went up 10%. Uh, our contribution to the state's pension funds for our municipal employees, we contribute to two different funds, went up 21% and 10%. So, a, a, and there were other line items, but you could, you could get a sense that these are things that are not negotiable and these are things that, um, that we need to, to provide and support. So, um, and, and the other challenge was, you heard us talk about the cap bank a few minutes ago. Um, you know, we have to meet all of these obligations plus the other increases we see just in our normal operations. Um, and the, the cost of fuel, the cost of electricity, the cost of all the other things that the borough needs to function to deliver services to our residents. So, um, late in our negotiations, the state did offer some relief by waiving some of those items that normally fall under that cap. But it was still too high a price tag and the mayor and council and the staff spent a lot of time looking at our budget and where we can make cuts in those line items where we have some flexibility, where we can manage the spending perhaps and control, control the costs. So, uh, the bottom line to, to that was, and we'll, and you'll see this when you get the budget documents and see the budget documents we make available, is that, uh, we were able to, to meet a lot of our goals. We were able to, even though we received a waiver to the cap on a number of these items, we still made enough significant cuts that we met our obligation to the cap, even, uh, including all of the items that could have been waived, counting them in the cap. And, um, for the first time in, in, you know, a, a long, long time, we're seeing that we do, uh, foresee a tax increase in this budget of two and a half percent. So one of the things I want to make sure we understand is, we're not saying that there's a two and a half percent increase on all of your property taxes. This is only the budget that is the borough's portion of your taxes, so it's about 20% of your property taxes. So to help you understand that in real dollars, for the average home valued at $424,000 in the borough, the average tax increase is $56 a year. So that's what two and a half percent is to the average homeowner. So despite, uh, painting the gloomy picture, uh, let's talk about some of the things that the budget does do. We talked about making some changes to the solid waste collection schedule and, and that area, but, uh, aside from that, all of our services are going to continue. We're going to continue to provide, um, the, the support and, and the services in terms of, uh, paving roads, maintaining our parks, maintaining our infrastructure, um, and doing all the other things that, that we do for the borough. We haven't cut out any programs or maybe any of the modifications in the programs. We might have cut out a couple of concerts in the park, sorry about that. But those were just added over the past year or so. So we didn't eliminate the concerts in the park, we just cut a couple of them out and, and things like that. One of the things we are doing that is new in the budget, uh, that we're kind of excited about, is, um, supporting a police request of allowing them to seek accreditation. What this does is it basically, uh, provides our police department with support, resources, and training that helps them achieve accreditation that should reduce our risk, our liability, and, uh, could reduce our insurance costs in the future. In the capital budget, we're going to be investing in our roads. We are going to be spending about $900,000 in capital improvements in our roads this coming year. Some of those are directly for our repaving program and other funds will be going toward matching grants that we receive for special programs and projects. We're going to be putting, um, charging stations in our new parking lot for electric vehicles. Uh, we received a grant for that, so we're putting up matching funds for that as well. And, uh, you know, some other things that we need to do. In the water utility, some improvements include developing solutions to address parts of town where there's a tendency to see water discoloration. We have some solutions planned for that and we budgeted money in our water utility capital improvement budget. And we're going to be doing some maintenance and repairs to the water tanks. Now, for those of you who don't know, we're actually property owners in Wyckoff and on that property, we maintain our water tanks. And, um, we, we make sure we maintain and manage our infrastructure in all areas, including our water utility, and maintaining those tanks is going to be a significant investment this coming year. So we'll get into a little more detail once the budget brochure is out and when we have our public hearing on April 11th. Um, I think our, uh, staff, our department heads, our professionals that made contributions to the development of this budget, uh, the time the mayor and council put in on, uh, developing this budget and finalizing what we're bringing to you this year. And, uh, I think it was, uh, a job well done and look forward to having a more detailed discussion on April 11th.
That's all. Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I just say a few words? So, um, so I've always been a great admirer of this mayor and council. Mostly, I've, I've been here for 12 years, for 10 of that, uh, the mayor and council did not raise taxes, which I thought was a pretty amazing feat, one of the few, I think, in the area, if not the state, to be able to do that for that long. So when, and, and so when taxes do increase, it's your, it's your school that's increasing it and it's your county that's increasing it, not the, not the municipality. So when I ran, was running for council, I thought it's going to be fun, a council that doesn't raise taxes. And, uh, when we got, when we got the news this year that I think these line items that are non-negotiable, we just have to pay them, we get bills for them, increased in, in numbers like $800,000, I think, right? Right, councilman? In, in that range, we were at a huge disadvantage and this was not a very fun budget, I think. And so I think this council worked really hard for weekends, long days, nights, to try to find ways in which we can cut this budget. I think there were a lot of really good recommendations. We cut things, we cut several hundred thousand dollars out of this budget in order to make it work. Um, I, I know not everybody is happy with a tax increase. I'm not happy with a tax increase, but I, I can say with great confidence that this is not a nice-to-have budget. This is a needs-to-have budget. This is as bare bones as you can get for a municipality to be able to maintain a basic level of, uh, a basic level of support to its, its residents and there's, there's just no fluff in here. So, um, I'm, I'm, despite, I think, all the challenges, I'm, I'm proud of it. And, and as you said, we did think to the future. I mean, we do think five, 10 years from now, how can we, uh, get ourselves back to a point where we aren't raising taxes and, and we have a sustainable, balanced budget? So, uh, so I thank everybody for the, the, it was, it was a lot of hard work.
Mr. Mayor, um, I also want to point, now that we've heard this sad news to a certain extent, we will be going out throughout, throughout the year trying to do things just like our administrators trying to do, and, and it's trying to find ways to help pay for some of the operating budgets that we need, like the fees on the tennis courts. I mean, and it, it may seem small, but it is, those small little things are going to help us, um, save money in, in our taxes. And we've really been thinking about that. I'm sure we're going to be thinking about all those things in the future of this year and in the years going forward. Now, if we end up having a budget that we don't have to raise taxes, maybe we'll take that away if we have to. And we won't need to have, um, money, fees from them and we won't have to rent out some of the courts. But we do have to find ways to be able to, um, uh, find ways to pay for some of these things that we want to give to the, to the, uh, to the residents. And they're going to have to give in some other ways too. If, if they don't want to pay taxes, then they're going to have to try and make up with it, with some smaller things. We can't find, we've been looking for things where we can make big, um, uh, big additions or big, uh, big cuts, but it's, it's very hard to do that. We're trying to make little cuts and whilst we're trying to make, find little ways to pay for, um, these things. And we'll, we'll continue to do that throughout the whole year and, and going forward. And I want to thank the council for doing a very good job at it, the mayor, the council, um, the administrator, the clerk, uh, all the, uh, assistant administrator and MDPW, the department heads, all did a great job in getting, trying to get this budget down. Um, we still have some more decisions to make for the rest, for the rest of this year, but I think we did a great job in putting that together and I'm proud of them also. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, clerk, take the roll.
Ms. Saracola?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerow?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Under unfinished business, let's have one item. At the last meeting, we had some residents come to us and talk to us about the 2021 Waldorf High School soccer team who won the state championship. And they requested us to put up a sign or signs in our town when you come into Waldorf that says, "Welcome to Waldorf, home of." And I told Mrs. Centeno that I will get back to her, I will speak to the council. What I did last week, I spoke to all of you. I sent yous an email, two at a time, so I didn't break no rules, so I didn't have to have the attorney say anything to me. And what happened was I polled everybody, yous all came and gave us your, uh, information, and, uh, we will be putting a sign up that says, uh, uh, welcome, it'll say, "Home of the 2021 Waldorf High School State Champ." We are going to be putting it, and Mrs. Centeno knows this, we are going to be putting it at the entrance of Borough Park when you come into Borough, I'm sorry, and when you come into the borough, it'll be on the, uh, sign that's off of Route 17 going north. What'll happen is, right now it says, "Welcome to Waldorf." Underneath it, there'll be a sign put up, like the sign she showed us all. It'll be put up there. With that, it'll be also an ordinance that will be written up saying how, when we move forward, anybody who receives in this school system a, an honor like that, it'll be up to the discretion of the mayor and council to put a sign on another one of the polls when you come into Waldorf. There's about six polls in Waldorf, when you're coming in, or five, we will decide where we're going to put it. But it will be placed to honor the school and their achievement. Mrs. Centeno knows about this, I spoke with her, she could not make it tonight, but she says to thank everybody for giving the honor to the 2021 Waldorf. That's all I have under unfinished business. Anyone have? New business? Anyone have new business? Yes.
Um, are we going to go back and honor the other boys' soccer team that?
Nothing was said yet, but if they do come forward, we will put a sign up for them that will be on one of the other polls. If a group of people come in and, uh, ask us, we will do like we did last time. And, but this time, we have to remember that we have to do it. this time, we have to remember that we have to do it.
We have to do what?
We have to do putting it up for them because we did it for these...
Right, okay, thank you.
But when someone comes forward, then we'll discuss it. Any other new business? If not, yes.
I just wanted to mention the PBA Egg Hunt is going to be held on April 1st at 10:00 a.m. at the high school stadium field. Bring your little ones, I believe it's fifth grade and under, bring your baskets and meet the Easter Bunny. And also, I'd like to wish all the residents a very happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Kelly had sent out an email, I think like last week, about the county recognizing Mental Health Month as May, and I was wondering if we were going to do a proclamation for that?
Yep, we do one every month.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Kelly's very good at that.
I know.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll have public comments, anybody from the public would like to comment, please come to the podium, to the microphone, state your name and address for our record.
Good evening, everyone, Chris Rogers, 37, Bergen Ave. Is this for comments or is this for question and dialogue as well?
Fuck you.
I don't play tennis, maybe I should, but I am a fiscal conservative, so just running the numbers, I was wondering if you did any benchmarking on the cost to rent a court in the private side? By my calculations, it's about $8.
We had, it's difficult with, we had looked at it, I had looked at it, it's difficult on the private side because they, it's common for them to charge a percentage of fees received, which we're not interested in, I didn't think we'd be interested in doing, because then we end up having to take in the cash ourselves and paying out them as a vendor or subcontractor. For public courts, I, it wasn't as clear as we're looking to make it here, like some people are doing it by hours, some people by seasons, you know, it just, it was hard to make the comparison here. So, on the private side, not applicable, on the public side, generally in the range of what we're proposing, or what you've adopted.
Okay, good. Another one, you mentioned the charging stations, that's great, wonderful to hear, how is it going to work? Is it going to be charged, charging stations, paid for?
Better be.
Funded by the town?
The installation funded by the town, but there will be a fee to charge there, yes.
Great. And then the affordable housing loans, I think it's $23,000. If somebody leaves within the tenure period, how do you plan to recoup those loans?
So, for owners of a property, there is a mortgage lien and a deed of eas, or a deed restriction on the property. On a rented property, it's just a deed restriction, since they have typically no mortgage. And so, those are the two mechanisms, so that if you leave prior to the 10 years, the program can recoup its money. Now, on the rental side, you can change over tenants in that time, and there will be no penalty to you as long as the owner who received the loan continues to be the owner for the property.
So, the owner, is the owner of the rental property?
That's right, the owner of the rental property.
Does the owner need to be in affordable range?
No, on the rental side, on the rental side, you look at what the rent is, and so, part of the restriction on the rental side would be that they remain at a rate that the program considers affordable, and depending on the category, affordable for very low, low, or moderate income residents of the borough. And that is, that is typically in line with the affordable housing rentals that we have in the borough, you know, the, we have, we have properties in the borough that qualify for our affordable housing inventory that are owner-occupied, and some that are rentals, and the ones that are rentals, they have a set maximum that they can rent those properties out for, that's the same construct here for the rehab units for rentals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just two more, what was the premise of initiating the traffic study?
We had a gentleman that came here and was concerned about the speeding through the towns, through the streets of the towns, was also concerned about the closing of the roads leading on to Route 17. So, he came in front of us, he asked us to do a survey, survey and do a, look into it, and we did it. Well, we're in the process of doing it.
No, excellent, thanks. I've noticed anecdotally more traffic on Bergen Ave, not a speeding concern, but I don't know if you're coming down Franklin Turnpike South, a lot more cars may have left on Bergen, and I don't know if it's because of traffic apps, ways, and Google is saying, hey, it's quicker to get to 17 this way than to go to Prospect. I'm always curious, every time I'm at the corner of my wife's, I want to follow one of these cars to see if they're on this street or if they go all the way down.
The gentleman that was here, that was one in the street.
I don't mind going on 17 personally, it's usually more traffic, probably Jersey.
We had the meeting with the company, and they were very, they had a lot of good ideas for us to look at, and, you know, they're going to bring back their findings for us. They did a great in-depth study of everything, very good, very impressed to see them, you know, we had a Zoom meeting, and it was really good.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, and I think one of the people, was his relatives live in the community?
That's right.
One of the gentlemen that did the survey, his family lives here.
Yeah, in-laws, yeah.
In-laws, so, we have to be nice.
Yeah, now I saw the boxes on the side of the road.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Thank you very much.
Last one.
Yes.
The gun range in town, is that a public access availability?
It's a club.
How does that work?
It's a club.
And you can join the club as a...
Yes, yeah, the police departments use it, different departments all share it, we have a bigger network with different towns, but there is a pistol club that uses it, too.
Is there a process for applying to the club?
Sure, what you could do is give us your name and address, Kelly will take it down after the meeting, and what we'll do is we'll get in contact with the gentleman who's in charge, and he'll call you.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mark Ramondo, 83, Iwood Ave. I had a quick question regarding the tennis courts, is the fee going to be based on one court or two courts, $1,000?
Per court.
So, that'll generate $2,000, so then the cost per hour is going to be around $6.80 per hour, rental fee, for someone that's going to be generating income?
It sounds right, yeah.
And are there limits on how many students they can have on those two courts at a given time?
Not per the organs.
Okay, because if you typically look at two doubles on each court, potentially eight people, person's going to make a lot of money on the backs of the town. I don't know if that's really responsible when residents only have to pay $20, and they're going to forego potentially 140, probably what, 10 and a half hours a week for residents? I don't know if there was any culpability to that, more fiscal dollar amount. Just looking out for the town, if someone's going to make money off the backs of the town, we must go, and we're going to forego residents from using it, the money should at least be represented in what they would charge if they were out of the dome, or if they were in the tennis court. Charge is around $15 to $16 an hour per court. Just consider that.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I make a motion, I have a motion to go into close.
Jeff Rogoff, 63, East Prospect Street. So, again, back to tennis courts, and again, I say this as someone whose children have taken tennis lessons, correctly, tennis lessons, I'm a fan of tennis lessons, I really would encourage, when you set the hours of that, to think in terms of, like, is there any flexibility in moving off of, like, 3:30 to 7:00, in particular, 5:00 to 7:00. 5:00 to 7:00 is a pretty popular time for people to be planning on going to work. Unfortunately, on a Saturday morning, so I, that being a really popular time, but I've gotten called a number of times from people in the town for me to come down and asking me if I'm available at 5:00 o'clock. If this is in part tied to, like, people associated with Waldick courts, which does not have air conditioning in the summer, and I'm not surprised that they're looking for some other place to play, other than Waldick courts without air conditioning, a lot of their base is kids, and there may be greater flexibility about scheduling this earlier in the day, if it is kids, and if it is kids, I think there's likely to be less conflict than there might otherwise be from a 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock time. I encourage you to come down and see, like, again, with A's, there may be A's to where people... So, again, I'm not trying to be difficult in terms of this, I appreciate the budget issues and the discussions of that and the need to raise revenues, I'm just saying, you know, it has been wonderful seeing the increased use on the tennis courts. I've been in this town since 2005, you know, for a while, I didn't see anyone on the tennis courts, maybe sad, as a tennis player, as a pickleball player, I'm delighted that it's lined, and like, for the first time last year, I'd show up on a Saturday morning, and it was full, and it was awesome. So, I really would want to make sure that we're making it available enough so that people who are frustrated and become... If you are going to do two courts at a time, I would ask them that the two courts be together so that when the kids are there, they're not getting onto the other courts, which, you know, so, here again, just a lot of logistical things to think about, and I encourage you to do so, because it's great to see the town using that, that way. With regard to the roads study, I remember when I was here previously and there was discussions about that, there was, you know, you had mentioned that any changes, part of the changes would be contemplating how it affects Prospect Street. As a resident of Prospect Street, you know, we obviously, some of you rode into the town, I expect that, I live here, I know what I'm getting when I move into Prospect Street, so Ritchie, I know you know it as well.
I know.
But, you know, I am a little concerned, just like, you know, that we need to contemplate how changes would affect that road. Getting out that road in the morning is already quite, you know, you have to be very careful, very quick, you know, and if there's more traffic, it's something I'm a little nervous about.
When we met with them, when we had a Zoom meeting with them, that was one of my questions to them, I said, you know, I don't want to do a survey or do a traffic study and dump all these cars onto another street or road, and they're very aware of that and they're very concerned.
I appreciate you raising that question. Last point, minor irritation, which I'm happy to deal with. So, with regard to the dog fees, I tried to submit my dog fee in January, I was unable to do so, at least with the check, because my dog is scheduled to get her rabies shots in September, I recognize there's a town, a state ordinance that does not let you register the dog unless you've had the rabies shots prior to maybe May, I forget what the exact date is, I spoke with my veterinarian, who did not recommend that I moved the shots up earlier. So, I'm just going to have to deal with the fact I'm going to have to pay a $10 late fee each every three years. I guess what I was kind of wondering, although there is an ordinance that requires a rabies vaccination prior to registration, there is nothing that requires a late fee specifically. I'm wondering if it is possible, if, like, someone in my situation can just fill out the paperwork, submit the check in January or February, and then come back to you when I have the rabies vaccination. I'm certainly not, I'm certainly going to have my dog vaccinated, I just do not want to alter the schedule based on my vet's recommendation, I'm happy, in fact, I did pay you in January, February, but I was told we could not do that because that's not the procedure. So, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way that I could avoid every three years having to pay the late fee, because I do not want to alter, at the advice of my veterinarian, the vaccination schedule, and I know you can't issue it until it's...
And that's, you just said it, we can't issue you a tag until that vaccine, until that rabies vaccine is current. So, yeah, you're, I know you're in that thing, and Tatiana and I have been trying to come up with something that we could present to the council to say, what can we do to make this a little bit easier for people, but, and we're still working on it. So, as of right now, I don't have anything, there's no change.
I mean, I guess the thing I would just note is, like, I don't, I'm not aware of anything in that state ordinance requiring a late fee, and I would imagine that if a resident comes through in January and February and says, here is my paperwork, here is my check, please cash my check, don't issue me the license yet, because I know you can't because it's your burden, but I will come to you later with it, you know.
But we can't cash the check, that's the issue.
Okay. You can't even cash the check?
We can't cash a check because it's in a system, your dog license is in a system, and in order to, they're issued consecutively, so as soon as we enter that check in, it's going to say, okay, now you're the next dog license number, whatever.
They can't be extroded?
It's just not how the system works. We're coming, we'll come up with something, but, I mean...
What's going to mean, again, it's not the end of the world, but, you know, every three years, I'm going to have to pay a late fee, when I otherwise would be delighted to give you my check and paperwork timely each time.
What you really should do is just wait until November 1st, and then you'll never have that issue.
What should I do?
Wait till November 1st to get your dog.
Okay.
Vaccine.
If, if...
If your vet will let you do that.
My vet says okay, we'll...
I don't know if they will, but...
Okay, thank you so much.
That's how I did it.
Anyone else? If not, I make a motion to go into close, we have a motion, motion by Don, second by Paul, all those in favor?
Aye.